Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This morning is the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, July 6, 2022, at 8:00 AM in the Town Hall Rose Room. Can we all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized? Any visitors? Hi, Jane. You want to be recognized? You're recognized.
I'm just scared to, um...
No, no, not yet.
Oh, not yet.
We're gonna talk a little bit.
Tell me that.
No problem. See, now you can talk, Jane. Uh, number three, approval of the minutes for the June 15, 2022 meeting. The motion to approve?
I need, I think those minutes should be amended.
Okay.
Because Christine voted in favor of the minutes, but she wasn't here for that previous meeting, reading prior to that. So I don't know what you do with that. She did not abstain from approving the minutes for the first meeting in June, but she wasn't present.
What happened to the meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't think we're really, I mean, the minutes are just what occurred at the meeting. So I get it, but...
All right, okay, then so moved.
Second?
With objection.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Reluctant.
Abstain? Thank you. Item number four. Okay, so we have a boatload of reappointments. It's the time of the year. The only one that will be removed from here is Martin Jaffe, Harbor Management Commission until 6/30/26, because we already appointed him at a previous meeting. So I will do these, I guess, in one lump sum, which would make it easier for everybody. So Catherine Zimetic for the Conservation Commission until term 6/30/2024, Mark Giacconi, Conservation Commission until 6/30/2024, Hank Teskey and Phil Williams, Economic Development Commission until 6/30/26, Roy Sullivan, Fish and Game Constables until 6/30/24, Arthur Isaacson, Housing Authority until 6/30/27, Eddie Atmarino, Inland Wetlands Commission until 6/30/26, Mike Florio, Inland Wetlands Commission, 6/30/2026, Tom Riccio, Shellfish Commission until 6/30/24, Peter Mizetti, Cable TV Advisory Board until 6/30/2024, Mary Jo Phelps, Conservation Commission, 6/30/24, Christopher Burke, Design Review Board, 6/30/25, Martin Corcoran, Shellfish Commission, 6/30/24, and Wesley Kavanaugh, Shellfish Commission, 6/30/24. Do we have a motion to appoint, reappoint all of these?
Move those.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, geez, I need to catch them.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
I gotta take a break.
Uh, number five, update from Sustainability Committee. We have Mr. Bergman here to give us an update.
I'm just gonna slide over here, and I will be brief. Um, I do want to tell, it's very nice to see all of you. I do mean that sincerely. It's, uh, I consider some of you, if not all of you, friends, and I think the hand, the town is in good hands with the people that I see in front of, in front of me. So I'm, I'm very happy to say that. Uh, I am now the chairman of the Sustainable CT Committee. Our task was submitting an application. Our next deadline is in late August. I have every intention of being awarded this certification. This group has been in operation locally for a few years, but it, what I'm coming to find out is it's a very convoluted process. It's very complicated, and what it ultimately takes is for, for myself and the committee members just to sit down, grind it out, hunt out some of the paperwork and documentation. I've met with Carl. I met with John and Kathy King yesterday. They've been very helpful. So what I, let me just read you what this thing is, so you have a sense of, and this is right from its website. Sustainable CT was created by towns, four towns, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Municipal leaders and residents from across the state, the CCM, and people from key agencies, nonprofits, and businesses partnered to develop the program during 2016 and 17. It is a volunteer certification program to recognize thriving and resilient Connecticut municipalities. An independently funded grassroots municipal effort, Sustainable CT provides a wide-ranging menu of best practices. Municipalities choose sustainable CT actions, of which you have in front of you, and I do want to thank Mary, because yesterday I sent Mary an email at, I think it was four minutes to four. Can you please print this very large document? You have it in front of you. These are a lot of the action steps and so-called best practices that we're looking at. Municipalities choose these actions, implement them, and then earn points towards certification. Provides opportunities for grant funding to help communities promote economic well-being and enhance equity. There is something here, and Carl advised me last week, this equity piece, it's step one, which is really the focus of what I, I've been doing. I've been spending at least an hour or two a day making sure we have this in place. The community sends out a survey. We see who lives here. We get a sense of the socioeconomics and how we can serve everyone across the board. So, um, that being said, I don't want to prolong this, but if you have a chance to look through some of these actions, some of these have been completed, some of them are in process. Um, they are, at least on the surface, seemingly very good things that towns can be doing. And you have my word that I will do everything in my limited power to get us in a good spot for certification. Bronze at minimum, silver would be a worthy goal for our August 23 deadline. And then when I report back to you in six months, which is part of our charge, I will hopefully be bringing you good news, and I suspect I will be. So, uh, thank you. I don't necessarily need anything from you. I just want to keep you appraised of what we're doing. I may need help in spitting out or pushing out some type of survey, but I think I can talk to Carl or Chris about any of those logistics. So, any questions from anyone? And I think a few of you have served on this. It's, uh...
Any questions? No? All good?
So we don't know what you have accomplished at this point?
I have it all documented. There's a, each step is, is given a point value.
Yeah.
Certification for bronze is a 200-point value. We're at about a buck fifty right now, so we're, we're really within reach of that bare minimum certification. Going through here at Meddy Meeting with John yesterday, we worked on Actions Five, which, dynamic and resilient planning. John and Kathy were very, very helpful. We looked at 10, which, if you look at this, is optimal health and wellness opportunities, sustainable food networks, and then 11, which I think you're going to pass some to a regional housing plan today, which I think I can use for, uh, 11, which is healthy, efficient, and diverse housing. So I think we're in pretty good shape. This is a little bit difficult for a layperson, but I, we have great support here in town. John, is there anything you might add to this?
No, I mean, if you're going to thank me in front of the public...
I'd like to thank John Gaskowski for his support.
Thank you, John.
All right. All right, good. Again, nice to see you guys.
Thanks, Eric.
See you too.
I'll talk to you soon.
All right, item number five, which is the Morgan Reunion Exception Request to Chapter 194, Article 111, 194-5A. This is the, um, exception request that they're required to come forth if they want to serve alcohol on town grounds. Um, sorry for the late notice on this. It's Jane's fault, so if she's here, we can blame her. This event, when's the event? Tonight?
It's Sunday. Come on. Can't do it for days.
Exactly. So all we need, um, is a motion to obviously approve this request.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? There you go, Jane. Now you can have beers in the back. All right, uh, I'm to, item number seven, which is the Affordable Housing Draft Plan that everybody got a copy of. Um, John is here. Maybe, John, can you give us just an overview on kind of where we're at with this, and then we can move forward with it?
Sure. Thanks, Chris. So, in very brief, this is basically the delivery of, um, the required Section 8-30J affordable housing plan that's mandated by the State of Connecticut. Those laws passed in 2017, requiring every municipality across the state every five years to, uh, produce or update a plan to increase the number of affordable housing developments in that municipality. And that is the sum total of the requirement of the statute. Um, it doesn't say what number, it doesn't say what kind, it doesn't say what percentage, it doesn't say where, locationally, just says every town has to come up with a plan to produce more. Um, last year, Riverco decided to take the lead in developing a regional housing plan, um, and then as part of that regional housing plan, assist the individual participating municipalities, which included Clinton, to produce their 8-30J affordable housing plan as an annex to the regional housing plan. Um, Riverco had no charge to the town or no additional charge for the town. Hired consultants, which actually included my, my firm, Thinking Planning and Policy Group, to assist with the municipal updates. And so I assisted Clinton along with SXD Riverchester, Lime, and East Hampton to produce their local plans. Under the leadership of Town Manager Kilduff and sort of Steering Committee, we, we produced the, um, the draft plan, which included several strategies and action items, which if you have the, the document, are found on pages 16 through 18 of the documents. Basically 10 action steps to take place over the next five years, which basically look at primarily administrative support for letting the public know about existing resources, whether they're state or federal resources, such as CHAP or USDA mortgage assistance, um, the town's, um, homeowner assistance programs, as well as some regulatory changes that Planning and Zoning made, particularly last year, when Planning and Zoning made accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments as a right in every residential zone. Um, so all of these are, are things that could increase the pool of affordable housing opportunities in Clinton. And it really is just a matter of making sure the public knows about these opportunities. Um, and that's really it. There's, and I, and so the, uh, the Regional Housing Plan is in draft form, and as I believe comments are being solicited on that, Clinton is one of the last communities to, um, consider approving its local annex. And if you, if you look favorably on this, then, then go forward up to the state, we'll be good for another five years and, and see where we go from there.
Thanks, Jane.
So everybody obviously has a copy of it. Does anybody have any questions for John? And/or Carl?
I have a comment. In the demographic section, it says that Clinton is expected to decline a large decrease of 28% over the next two decades. Do you, how many, where does that information come from?
It's, I would take that with a grain of salt.
Yeah.
It's from, it's from the, that's on, Carol mentions page nine, basically. That's from the Connecticut State Data Center. Um, it, it's, it's merely a projection, and I think it reflects a lot of Middlesex County losing, um, two primary demographic groups. One is, is young adults, where people leaving college or leaving home and not, and not really coming back. And then sort of natural attrition.
Seniors.
Seniors getting old and, and dying.
So, Jane?
And not having sort of that, that wave of, of, uh, you know, your 40 to 60-year-olds sort of moving into that elderly demographic.
Wow, that's huge.
It's, I mean, this is, it's a little bit more precipitous than Connecticut is projected over the next 20 years, but it's, it's pretty much in line with a lot of Middlesex County. Um, but again, this is not your fate. This is, it's merely a projection.
Thought that was interesting.
There was a lot in there that was interesting.
Scary.
Yeah.
Also, the fact that our rents are higher than both Middlesex County and, and Connecticut, the median. Um, what can we do about that? I mean, nobody wants to lower their rent.
Yeah, exactly.
How do you deal with that?
Well, there's, there's a lot of methods. I mean, and this plan doesn't really make any, many grand announcements about how to do it, but, I mean, it's largely a market thing. I mean, unless, unless the town is, the town and the state is really going to put the phone on the scale and, and build more income-restricted multifamily housing, rental housing, it's, it becomes sort of a supply and demand question. And I mean, and generally, it's, it has been harder, I think particularly in, in lower Middlesex County, particularly in towns like Clinton that, that don't have sewer lines, to produce a lot of new multifamily, a lot of new rental housing. Um, I do think that in the last, I mean, in the last three, four years, there has been actually a lot more rental housing in process in Clinton than there were, say, the previous 10 or the previous 15. So I think supply is going up slightly, but, I mean, that's, it's, if the market, unless, unless we're gonna put our phone on the scale and say, yes, we are creating some more deep restricted, it's just a supply and demand question.
The, um, survey that's included in here shows there were 90 participants. Is that just Clinton, or is that...
That was, that was Clinton, Clinton's portion of the overall regional.
Okay, which is less than 1% of the population.
The number is fairly low.
Is that acceptable?
Um, it's not acceptable if you're going to depend on that for statistical...
Yeah, thank you.
...you know, viability, but it's, it's basically a...
Well, it's what you got.
It's a piece of input. Take it wherever it's worth.
How was it generated? Was it sent through the mail, or...
It was primarily online.
Okay.
Survey Monkey, and then it was, the publicity, you know, was, was on Facebook and email blasts and in the newspapers and stuff like that.
Got you.
Sort of get what you get.
Yep.
But the 38% of Clinton households living at poverty level...
Isn't, uh, survey-generated statistic, is it?
Not at poverty, but the 38% is not a poverty level. That is below, below median income.
Okay, below median.
Which would qualify for, right, deep restricted housing.
And when we say income, do we see AGI? Is that where we're getting that number?
AGI was what? Is that adjusted gross?
Adjusted gross income?
Uh, no, it's, it's median household income.
And the source of that is...
Which is the American Community Survey, the US Census Bureau.
Okay. Doesn't include retirement funds, social security funds?
It's income. So whatever, whatever people report as income.
On their tax return?
Right.
Anyone else?
Well, I just thought there was a lot of information in it. You'd have to read it two or three times. I've read it a couple of, I thought I was gonna be bored, but it wasn't. It's a lot of, it's a great report. I mean, you know, thank you for getting this thing done, because there's a lot of information in there, like Carrie said, brought up there, and Carol. Different stuff you wouldn't never know about.
I think a lot, I mean, a lot of credit goes to Carl and then to, to Riverco, who put this whole process together.
Riverco member. Kudos. Nice job.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, John. All right, so at this point then, we will just look for, if anybody doesn't have any other questions, look for a motion to adopt, uh, the Affordable Housing Plan Draft.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Thanks again, John.
Thanks, John.
All right, on to number eight, which is the Charter, or the Resolution Creating a Charter Revision Commission. So this was discussed at our last meeting. Obviously, we all got copies of the charge and a calendar. Does anybody have any questions off the bat about this? We also have four individuals that have already submitted applications to be a part of the Charter Revision. Minor Vincent, Dolly Mizetti, Mike Corniac, and Arthur Kiever have all submitted applications to be on the commission. So I think, I think we said one more?
I've been asking people, but I have not had any. I asked a couple of women from the last Charter Revision. They're busy.
I mean, at this point, if everybody's good with the, um, the resolution, we can just move forward with the resolution at this point?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. All right. So then we'll be on the lookout for one more, and then we can appoint members. Um, item number nine is the line item transfer requests. We have three of them. So the first is Clinton Volunteer Fire Department. They're looking for other operating of 1,090, 78, and they'll be taking it from stationary supplies, repairs, and maintenance. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Next is up the Town Clerk's Office. Uh, salaries of 1,404. It'll come out of election costs for 1,404. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is it Sue's signature?
What? Department head's sig, she didn't sign it.
Chairman.
Chairman.
Should Sue have signed it?
She was working remotely, so...
Okay.
Yeah, she gave her approval on them. I have a valid date for her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Next is DPW for heavy, heavy-duty truck. This is fiscal year '23 account, 641222, coming from Heavy Duty Truck, 511222, and 1,500 for Lift, Rolling Jacks. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. On to item number 10, council discussion. Anybody have anything they would like to bring forth at this time?
I'd like to thank you very, very much. The website and the Facebook page is really looking like we're a much more vibrant community, and we are. And I'm proud of it when I look at it. Thank you.
Nope.
Aren't you going to talk about that?
Yes. Chairman's report. Yep. We're good? All right, Chairman's report. Um, so I will discuss and talk about. So, um, I was, we got invited to the PIC Annual Awards. Um, Carol attended the meeting. I actually was at the Clinton Education Golf outing that day, playing in the rain. Um, so that was fun. Um, they didn't tell us, but we, the town, Clinton Town Council was awarded as a community champion, and they presented a award to the Town Council that they recognized the Town Council's commitment to the health of your youth. Uh, this was demonstrated in 2022 by the creation and passing of a town ordinance banning the sale of retail cannabis in Clinton. So they awarded this to us at that meeting. Carol was there to accept it, so I just wanted to let everybody know that, um, as a result of the ordinance that we passed last year, or earlier this year, they, um, awarded us a community champion.
Excellent.
So there you go. Um, other than that, I have nothing else, so we will move on to item number 12, which is the Town Managers' Report.
So you have my written report in the agenda packet. A couple of things to call your attention to and amplify. Uh, Town Engineer Bid. We reissued the RFP for on-call engineering services. Uh, seven proposals came in yesterday, so we'll start the review process there to evaluate who's the, the firm that will serve us as on-call engineer going forward. The historic district study for Commerce and Lefingwell. We received two proposals for that yesterday, uh, so I'll start the review process with Peggy, and then we'll, we'll go from there. Uh, state, the state has to be involved in it because of the grant, uh, so that may take a little bit longer to actually get to, uh, award. Uh, the capping of the landfill is still in process. Uh, one of their drilling rigs needed some maintenance, so they are slightly delaying. Their original milestone was to get a report to us by the end of June. Indications are still positive, but they still need to finish their exploratory work before we have anything definitive, uh, so it's anticipated that I should have a report for you by the time we have our next meeting. That would perhaps give us a little bit more clarity on how that project will move forward. Uh, online permitting is now a thing for land use, and the system for building was updated and launched at the end of the month, um, so we're seeing some good activity coming out of both, uh, building and out of land use now, with people being able to be, do that work online rather than coming into Town Hall, and it improves the efficiency of how we do business here. We also merged the BIP 100A process, so we're doing some of, of front-load work and collecting funds for CRAD, which enhances customer satisfaction so that the customer is going to one stop rather than coming here, then going to Old Saybrook and doing their transaction in two steps. They can do it all in one step through the online system and, uh, the relationship we've worked through with CRAD. Uh, Dockmasters started. Dave Adams and I conducted interviews on the pipeline position down at the dock. Uh, Robert Derry was the successful applicant to replace Mike Markovics, who resigned earlier in the, uh, earlier in the boating season, and then Dave was running as interim, trying to hold things together while we went through the selection process. Um, so the dock is now fully, fully staffed going forward, and we think we have a good candidate that can bring the right touch to improving interactions down at the, uh, down at the dock compared to where we were before. Uh, and then gearing up for advertising the town planner. Uh, now, job description's been approved, finalizing the ad, then we'll start putting more out on that one. See what happens when we put that ad out on the street. Uh, in terms of grants, the steep grant, uh, we're gonna need to make a decision one way or the other. So if you recall, steep grant had a potential award of up to half a million. The state wanted to see hard dollars for a match, not sort of in-kind or soft dollars, so you needed to have real money attached to that. Um, 20% of the project cost is sort of the benchmark that they would like to see, whether or not that's funded, or you can fund it. Uh, they just want to see match. Uh, so right now, I've got two projects that are quote-unquote shovel-ready. They don't need permits, and they can move, uh, and be ready to go. Uh, one of them would be additional work for the radio project for police, fire, EMS, and public works, as we continue to build out that system. There are dollars already allocated in the budget, which makes it easier for me to have match to go forward. Uh, Park and Rec would like to see, uh, the turf replaced at IROC. Uh, there is no match for that. There's more money, so we're gonna have to identify funds for our local match on that one. Does not require permitting. Some preliminary engineering work has been done thus far. Cost estimate is in excess of half a million dollars, so local match would have to go at a minimum to fill the gap that's created between the maximum steep grant award and the actual cost of the project. Um, but finding that source of funds is the, is the challenge.
We can't use our, the funds to match.
And you cannot use our funds to match.
Badass.
And it is, that is now policy coming from the state more and more, which is, that's their decision. Um, it perhaps does not allow for maximum leveraging of federal funds, but that seems to be the decision process coming out of Hartford, is that you can't use steep, uh, or other federal funds to be your match. You have to have local dollars involved, which I think everybody at the local level would argue, you're not maximizing the federal funds, but that's the state's decision. Um, so that's, that's where we're at with the steep grant. Uh, I mean, I can write and go either way. Um, Park and Rec is still pulling together stuff on their end, so it's very much in process, and I think for Park and Rec, the challenge is coming up with, coming up with the source of funds for the match. So at a minimum, it's 90, $93,000 would be the, the match for Park and Rec. We already have a significant amount of money parked in the capital plan for the radio project, so the match is really kind of there already and appropriated.
Any application has to be in by August?
No, August. No, August.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Any questions?
I don't have any questions about that, but I do have a question. Did anybody get back to Kathy, our poet laureate?
I did follow her after a meeting regarding some questions on the bench and the bus. And then I asked her to reach out to me if she didn't get responses. She looked at she sent out to you guys, but I had not heard from her on that. So, she did answer some questions on the bus. There's a lot to unpack with taking on a bus that has had the end of its service life and bringing it back here to the bench. I think she has a source of funds.
Yeah, the bus could pick up the council members in the morning for our meetings and stuff like that.
Makes things so much easier.
You know what I mean?
If that's... If you think that's a good use.
We'd have to keep this on the bus.
Wait, oh, we could take it and drive it. We could use it in the parade next year. We don't have to walk.
It's a little hot.
You guys are bad.
It's a little hot.
You're bad.
All right, thank you, Carl.
Come on, we got a good series.
Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Anybody have anything to report?
Yesterday, Abby Anders went before the Emlyn Wetlands Commission with the rain garden proposal on the Indian River Bank, something that Carl recommended as a stormwater runoff ARPA-funded project. It passed with them, except we have to find out that the elevation is above 3.4, so it doesn't go into deep sands. I think it'll be okay. And there's going to be a sidewalk. Plans are, hopefully, that it will be created in the best possible month, and that's September, so it can get established without a lot of water.
Where is this?
The coffee break side of the Indian River.
Okay, got you.
About 300 square feet of garden, full of pollinators and whatnot. And Dennis, we will have a plan for maintenance. And I would love to invite you to the Food For All Garden 100-yard Pollinator, where we haven't watered for two years. It's a miracle to weed. And with a mulch, you don't weed much either. So, anyway, that's going forward.
Carrie?
And I would like everybody of the International Food and Beer Festival on Friday. It's from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and they have... Last I heard, there were 10 craft beers there. And entertainment all afternoon. The food from, I don't know how many represented countries. This is going to be really, really nice. It hasn't cost the town anything. And there's a very small group of committed people working diligently at this, and I hope everybody will make an effort to stop down and say hello. I will be the one in the sweatband working there.
Lucky you.
I can think of 75 and I'm a gorm.
Anybody else?
Oh, he's talking about all these events.
Yes.
I happened to notice Carol the other Sunday myself. We attended the Henry Carter Hall... Not the Henry Carter Hall, the George Flynn Classical Concert over at Morgan. And that was fantastic, guys. They brought in this Connecticut Opera people. And it was a wonderful show, put on by five people. And they sang all of Andrew Lloyd Webber hits from the plays. And the place was packed right to the last seat, the whole orchestra. Very, very nicely done. Kudos to, I'm sorry, George Flynn. I keep reading so much about the library, how much they're doing also. So, anyway, I just wanted to comment that I guess the community is back out. And as Carol mentioned and Carrie, you know, there's so many other things not coming out. We have to also make sure we get the people here about the First Thursdays. I guess that's back in action, so people should come down and see that. And of course, we'll have the Summer Fest with the fireworks in August. So, you know, summer goes by so fast in this town. And we do have a lot of events, and it's great to see everybody back out. And everybody pitching in from all angles. It's really, really heartwarming, really nice.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else? All right, then we will move on to item number 14, which is a motion to adjourn to executive session and invite Mary and Carl.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? All right, we are back from executive session, and I would look for a motion to amend the agenda to add 14A to rev... Let's see, it would be to further the contract discussions with the town manager.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, so the next, then, 14A will be to continue discussions on a new contract for the town manager. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you, thank you, and we look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, I know you liked this meeting today, Dennis. You probably don't want to leave.